Never mind, there we go, alright. Here we go. I will call this Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Vinyl Haven, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Order. Roll call, Leslie Dyer, Eric Gasparini, myself, Tam Ally, indoor town manager, Liz Bunker, Deputy Town Court. I move, sorry, the agenda was approved, are there any additions, add? No, alright. I move we approve the agenda as presented second, all those in favor? Number three, approve the minutes from the February first, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Second, all those in favor? Prove number four, proven time treasures warrant, number thirty-three, so move, second, all of them favor? Communications, number five communications. Seeing none, we'll move on. Number six, speakers from the floor. Going once, going twice, alright. Number seven, committee and department reports appointment, seven A housing committee reports.
Excellent, thank you. So, I believe Andy sent you our report.
Yes.
That's all the research we have to date, there's still a little bit more we're getting clarification on. It seems the Island Institute and their weatherization program took place last time the Island Institute organized it, Andy was the Island Fellow. And the Island Institute picked up the financial gap for transportation, lodging, and the extra amount that was needed for coming out to the island and the time and everything that that took. So, the main community foundation has a grant, community building, Knox County, deadline is tonight at midnight. I've started working on this grant and once I finally got all the information from Keith McPherson, who's the guy who came on last time. So, I really understood, you know, that he's the person, how people get qualified, whether it could really happen. And so, I have that now, and it's two things are required. For the town to say yes, this you can do, put this grant in, and for a letter of authorization saying, saying that. And that we're an authorized committee of the town, but Andy, I talked to Andy today, he very kindly called me, and he had a couple of good questions and concerns. You know, last time this was done by the, what was it called, the Energy Club? And, you know, KK was involved in the Island Institute and Andy. People need this, there are fourteen people on heat last year and fourteen people the year before, and that's the Energy Assistance Program, Fuel Assistance. And I talked to Candy Barton, who runs the Food Bantry, as you all know, and she said there are nine people who want it now. And she thought that she rattled off twelve people just off the top of her head, who she thought could benefit from it. So, this, in this grant, I put down nineteen, because that would be the, the nine and then the twelve that Candy was imagining, just in case to cover that. But this sort of means the Housing Committee, I guess, is going to be trying to make this happen. You know, to organize it, to get them out here, to buy their ferry tickets, to organize. And I'm just hoping that, you know, we can, we can really do that, because people need it. And I don't know who else would do it.
Well, I think the Housing Committee is the perfect.
This is the part of trying to keep people in their homes.
I mean, that housing assessment said, you know, people said fuel cost was a reason that some of them needed to move. And, you know, repairs that were needed, and if people could be more comfortable and have more energy efficient homes, and they could use that resources for other vital things. That would, if we got it, which God knows, there's no guarantee, I don't know if I've ever written a grant before, but it wouldn't come till June, but that's not, that's probably when they'd come out. And, you know, look at things and start thinking about what they could do.
Does anyone remember when they came last, is that the same timing, they would come out in the spring, summer?
I don't know, I can't remember if they came in the summer, I know the spring and fall.
I don't think anyone likes to try to come to do work out here in the summer.
Well, it's hard to find, find a place to stay, but I do recall. Fall, right, Andy, there was winterization going on.
Doing the energy audits for, presumably, it's mostly for the winter months you're talking about. And you do it in the spring, summer, it just seems like you're not going to get the same picture. I know you can tell certain things, all this, you know. Have better insulation or better windows, stuff like that, but. You're talking about making people's homes more airtight for the winter, if you come out in the summer.
It still works.
It's still worth the same.
They put like that blower door kit in the doorway, block everything else off, and it creates that negative pressure in the house.
Yeah.
And they're able to, through that, kind of gauge with the number on that reed, so it's a cubic. The airflow through the house measuring like cubic feet per minute or something.
Okay.
And then, the walk around, basically, and you can feel where that blower going, you can feel like where it's kind of coming in.
Yeah.
And so, they'll usually, what they can do with, in like a six hour period, between setting that up. And they can chase all the small, easy to get cracks and fill them with silicone or spray foam or those kinds of things.
Yeah.
That's what he did in the past, I don't know if he's doing the exact same thing or not, but basically, while he was here, he'd do four, five, four to six hours of work on the home while he was here.
Okay.
And then leave, leave the property with kind of a list or an understanding of like what next steps they, they could take to further make improvements.
Okay.
I don't remember if he said how many that were done in total, but I'd be willing to bet it was forty or fifty houses.
Wow. He said he came several times, but I didn't know it was that many.
It might have been more than that, I mean, it could have, had been more than that, because they were doing seven or eight a week. I want to say they got to ten percent of the islands year round housing stock, but I can't remember.
And you didn't have to be low income either to, to apply for that.
You got a higher rebate, you got a higher rebate, depending on if you were low income.
Right.
I know I like to have an energy audit, even on my newer home, because my electric bill is.
From efficiency main, you can get up to six hundred and fifty dollar rebate. If you're qualified as a lower income and qualify for low heat and your home value is less than a hundred and thirty thousand. Which is going to be a challenge for.
It has to include the land too, not just the house. That value of a hundred and thirty.
What properties out here even have that? Not even, not even possible. Really?
Yeah.
I have a big lot.
So, even if you don't meet those requirements, there's still a five hundred dollar rebate, I believe, for everyone that, everyone else that wants to sign up for the program, so it's not one hundred and fifty less, but.
So, for this, for the heat qualified people, the low, the low income, and the qualifications are actually pretty high. We're looking at those, kind of amazing, but anyway. For them, it's, it's totally free, the only additional cost is the cost that the Island Institute picked up, which is what we're trying to cover with this grant. Because I don't know where else we get the money.
How much is the grant for?
Well, we would be asking for.
I saw that you asked for five thousand in town budget.
Yeah, well, that was for, not for this, that was, I think, just for. Sort of, that was to help people with the grant process for various programs.
Okay.
There's so many programs out there, as you can see in this list of stuff, and I don't know how anybody in the world can navigate what they qualify for, what they, you know, what, what benefits them. It's so complicated, you almost need a job like Leslie has at the Medical Center, a person who does social services. To help people figure out where they are financially, how they could benefit.
Right.
It's really complicated, so Marjorie Statten had offered to, in fact, she, I believe she's on the call on So's Hooper. To try to help people, she tried when she was town manager, to fill out some of this paperwork, and she said it's incredible. To really need someone to help with that, and I don't think that's us. That's a little above our pay grade.
That's fine.
But we, we, I had to adjust the, some, because Andy pointed out, I made some mistakes about the ferry costs and things, it's, I think it's seventy-one, seven thousand one hundred and something. They sent us both the updated version I was working on this afternoon, but Efficiency Main will be putting in like eleven thousand four hundred.
Okay. But that money would be needed. This current, right?
I mean, if you get it through a grant, it's usually has its own timeframe, you know, the difference between us.
Oh, I thought this was an addition to the grant that they're asking for.
No, my understanding is that the grant would pay for the cost, not the, you know, there isn't anything that was budgeted this particular fiscal year to.
Right.
To do something like that, and I think it's a good discussion for this, for you to have, and to make sure that, not that it's not a worthy thing, but just how, how does that fit into the town budget?
Right.
Is that, you know, an endeavor that we're gonna aim, you know, strive to continue after this initial effort, or just kind of see how it goes the first time without any long term?
Well, it sounds like, obviously, we've done it before, but it's been a while.
The Energy Club did it before, which was a separate like five oh one C three entity.
But it's the same. Same idea.
The same idea, yeah.
So, something maybe we should be keeping on the budget going forward. If we don't use it every year. Everyone on the list is at their home, checked and updated as much as possible, they hopefully wouldn't need it. Every year, but okay.
I mean, the last time they did it was over ten years ago, you know how much stuff changes in ten years, it's probably good to have another.
Yeah.
Audit for some of those older houses, because there's probably a lot better stuff than what they had available, or the stuff that they had, could have worn out, you know, in ten years.
Right. More regular. More regular checkups on these homes would be beneficial for everyone.
The hope is that people will be more comfortable in their homes, and they won't feel they have to move, because they'll be more affordable and more comfortable.
Yeah. So, what do you need from us tonight?
Well, the application requires authorization from the town that, you know, we're an official committee of the town, and we have the select, select board's approval. And I think that was it, wasn't it? I think that's it.
Do we need it right?
So, you need a motion to.
You have to sign it. I have something drafted.
Thank you.
Now, I'll modify it if it's, I mean, it's just a general acknowledgement that the committee exists by way of the selectmen, having appointed people, creating and appointing people to it. And it didn't, didn't necessarily exactly stick, I didn't have the vote yet, if they want to vote on authorizing an application to be submitted.
I'm really sorry to do this so last minute, I'm just waiting for the information, and tonight's the deadline, so.
That's, that's, I moved that Board of Selectmen authorizes the town manager to sign such a letter, you know. Encouraging these activities from the Housing Committee.
Second.
Good enough.
Does that work? Alright, all those in favor?
If we ever get audited, there we go.
Well, it's a plan for a grant, I don't.
I don't know whether Marjorie or Hooper wanted to say anything, they're on the, on the Zoom call. No, Cooper's saying no, Marjorie, you, no? Well, it's nice of them to attempt, though, I appreciate that. Thank you all very much for your support, onwards and upwards.
Thank you.
This is a great before.
Well, we'll give you more information when we get it, I think there's a couple of things that were not completely clear.
Okay.
Thank you so much, I'm gonna go back and work on the grant.
Alright, thank you, thank you for coming.
I will.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that, my grandmother's thing.
Yes, that's awesome.
Okay, great, thanks, Ellen.
Move on to seven B engineer report.
As I said to my, my report, we did send along, just continuing to finalize the transfer station with more input from the staff on that. They did send along the report for the fire department building, the fire station, but I did have some feedback for them to see if they could. Add a couple of things, I had, for example, a better visual of what the bump out would look like for the fire engine.
Yeah.
And that didn't, I mean, it's kind of there in like a layout, but it doesn't like show us what kind of looks like, I was gonna see if that was something that they had and could put in the report for us, and better visualize that. And I hadn't had a chance to show Mark yet, he's just got back, so I can have that for the next meeting.
Okay.
The transfer station design should be ready for the next meeting.
Go ahead.
For your review, so we can try and resolve with that as soon as possible.
You know, if we had that, if we all approved that, would that be something we could do this fall?
Our plan, my direction to them was that we want to see this done before.
Before the summer, okay. Even better.
I mean, the job itself isn't terribly, you know, the job itself, you know, we're, a lot of it would probably be precast pieces.
Yeah.
And, you know, you probably spend more time mobilizing and tearing down, or probably setting up a temporary solution for trash.
Right.
All the constructions going on, and we got, we do have a fair amount of work ourselves to do to remove vehicles and oil tanks and.
Yeah.
Deal with the ash pile, which some of which can just be kept on site for fill, but. You know, so, I mean, you're probably six to eight weeks, just from the time you say go, for that RFP and the bid process to play out.
So, it sounds like it's this fall issue.
I, I think there's still a hope that it could be.
Before July, maybe?
I think, no, the big thing is just, if we can get it approved, if there's no other changes that need to be done, and get it out in March. Best case scenario, they can start, well, if we get selected for the bid, end of April.
Right.
You know, and they were thinking it was like a two to three week project.
Okay.
It's just again, that mobile, I mean, once everything's here and ready to go.
Big precast pieces, I mean, the one for the bridge took forever to get, so, I mean, if it's not something that's standard, could take a while to get it.
Well, that'd be great if they, let's see what the design is, and hopefully, it's not, we have any issues with it, we can move forward, and if, yeah, if they had it before summer, you know, before July, that would be.
I, I think between Kenny and, and, you know, what he sees, and, you know, even my own observation, you know, it was really like a before June, kind of, before Memorial Day, please.
Yeah, that's what I.
Just because even generally, there's a lot more activity going on between gear going overboard and being tossed and.
Yeah.
Houses, housework happening more often, and, I mean, it's just.
No, that's true. Wait until the fourth of July. And it wasn't done, then it would really be bad, I mean, if you're shooting for June first, and it's a week over.
No, I, I'm not saying we, we try to get it done before July, sooner the better, I just, obviously, if we get to July and it's not done, it's going to be a big mess for everyone, so.
I mean, probably during that period of construction, I guess, is we won't, we'll take everything we do now.
Okay.
You know.
Would you just have like a trash or demo in a recycling container somewhere?
Possible, and just focus on those three units, and even the, yeah, I think that's the, in a minimal, and that's what we're gonna try and maintain.
I mean, people can hold on to scrap metal for.
Yeah.
A few weeks. Couple months if they have.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
If someone has a huge pile in their yard, you'll just have to self-pay to look the other way for.
Hopefully, it's not that big. We tell them early on, like, if you have things you want to throw away now, you're not gonna do it, you're not gonna be able to do it this time, so getting them beforehand.
The way we're set up now, we're finally, I don't know if you've noticed, we finally have been able to catch up on the metal pile, the exception of the cars and the oil container, you know, oil barrels. And the pile that was, been a mountain at times, actually, having that dumpster on site to be able to load, when we need to, I guess, it's just been a huge help.
Yeah.
And so, that, other than the pile of debris falling off the metal over the, all those years, the metal's pretty well picked up.
Okay.
That's, that's, and so, that's something that could potentially still work. But yeah, we should have a final design, barring any further input. I guess something before the meeting, I'll send it along, because you have it prior to, and.
What is the plan, or where the, are you gonna try and just put them down the hill, pass the rod gun club if you can?
For the temporary?
Yeah.
I, the hope is that they'd be able to potentially slide the. Last time we talked about it, we could potentially slide the solid waste compactor next to the recyclable one, because recyclables are already out of the way. You know, but when it's done, it, it would come over to the wall, and you'd have your trash demo and recyclables kind of along that wall.
And then when they got the other side done, move. I was just curious, well, I, I don't remember if we're in that fight, I guess.
I mean, there are other properties that we have that we could, like, like next door there, we could potentially try and read wires for a short period if we had to, and. In worst case scenario, demo could be dumped on the ground, loaded with like a tobacco, if we need to keep it going.
Or if you had a few exact, if you could have them, put them in that, and just drive it down with a front end loader and dump it in there, whatever.
The emphasis has been on the design and what, what will be built, and so, we just need to make sure that there's a good. Clear visual of what will happen in the interim while it's being.
Hopefully, those numbers don't change.
I hope it is. Think they're gonna have to, right, the prices have gone up. Yeah, yeah. Alright.
Some of the questions on the workday.
Seems like everything's moving forward.
It's going pretty well.
I did get one Friday.
Our next meeting will be March first, correct? Two weeks from today.
Barring any meeting in between for budget needs.
Yep. Jake, will you still be here March first?
Okay. I won't be here March.
That's fine. If we had that final.
I'll be, I'll be here until then, Friday, I think, before, unless. I'll leave the third for some reason, if there's a big weather issue or something, but I'll be here that week.
That way, we can really smooth forward on that, that piece. Yeah.
That's what screwed me up tonight, sorry, I was late, I, some reason, I still have five thirty in my head.
No, five o'clock.
I saw five oh one, I was like, oh no.
Alright, I will move on to eight, old business, community resilience partnership.
Follow up on what we discussed a few times.
Should I, should I share? Okay, yeah, so, what we had talked about last time was sort of, yeah, what we're, what we're doing to move this forward. We have a community action grant application that is due March twenty-second, so, moving backwards from there. What is required is that we enroll in the Community Resilience Partnership in order to apply for the Community Action Grant. And that involves completing a community resilience self, self evaluation, which is something that, that I've started. Will work on a bit more with Andy and consult a little bit with Mark around the hazard mitigation pieces. And review with the Sea Level Rise Committee, and what I'm thinking is for ease of, or simplification, that. That I just deliver that completed self resilience, self evaluation to you when the grant application. The grant proposal is done, and you can just look at the whole thing at once, if that works, and that would be like mid-March.
That's fine with me.
Okay, and then the other piece is that there is this municipal resolution, which was included in the packet, and so, I went through and, and added in, you know, the, the pieces that make it. Particular to Vinyl Haven, did a little bit of editing, but you'll see there's a portion that like has to be in there, and then there's things that you are allowed to modify a little bit or add to. And in that, you'll see sort of the justification for using the community. The Flood Resilience Checklist Workshop, that was in two thousand eighteen, as a sort of required public or community engagement event, in which we're discussing priorities. High level priorities for resilience actions, so, we need the select board to adopt the resolution, so, what I included in there was. What, what I drafted, I don't know if between you and Andy, there are other things that you want to add, modify. Yeah. Yeah.
I'll be nitpicking on language for days if we so desire, and this looks, you know, perfectly. Perfectly adequate, it's very well done.
So, one of the questions, are we required to. Do all of these things, we're just saying, these are just.
The justification for why.
Why we need.
Why the town is resolving to.
Just like the transitioning municipal fleet vehicle to electric vehicle, I mean, I'm not against that, but. Obviously, you can't drop stuff right now, since they don't exist, some of that stuff, but like, in the future, when the future, when the option exists, and it's not ten times as expensive as something else, then it would be something I would think that everyone would think.
Right. We, we don't have any charging stations, I hear by the way.
Within, within the next ten years, all. All major automakers, the same, they're gonna be trade electric anyways. It's not saying, it's not saying, we don't have ourself constraint to a date to do all this, it's just, this is stuff that we think should happen.
Right.
In the future.
Okay.
It looks all right to me, like, some of the, some of the stuff, like Eric said, you could nitpick on little things all day and night if you wanted to, but.
No, that was just my only question, is if it's. We're not stuck to doing things that we can't actually do right now, no.
Yeah, I think that, that goal is like, this is the foundation to say, we're committed to looking at this list of seventy-two actions that the state has identified. That are related to climate mitigation, or. Sorry, energy, energy use, and that to stay enrolled in the Community Resilience Partnership Program. Which is what enables municipalities to apply for the funds. It's just saying, this is sort of the guiding document that justifies us being in this program and looking at these actions, identifying which actions we want to pursue. And then going after the funding to pursue those actions, so, again, it could be, oh, sorry.
So, this isn't just a one-time funding option, but once we're in the program, we could apply for funds again in the future.
Yeah, as long as you're making progress, and you, you, they ask every two years, you sort of revisit where you're at on that, that self evaluation check, checklist. And go through it again and say, well, you know, how are we doing, are we, are we making some progress here? And, you know, the idea is presumably, if you're checking off some of those actions on the list, or you are coming up with other actions that, that address the. The items on the list, on the, on the self evaluation, that you are making progress, you, municipalities have the opportunity to apply twice a year for the funds. Doesn't mean you get it twice a year necessarily, but you have the opportunity to apply twice a year.
Okay, great. Do we need to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I assume. You would, yeah, and this, worth noting, she'd highlighted. Require statement, and there's included the one, and highlighted in yellow, the note that was optional preamble statements that you could choose to put in, or you could keep it.
I mean, I'm comfortable with all of it, obviously, the required statements have to be there, but. I mean, I'm comfortable with all of it. Obviously the required statements have to be there, but.
I, I think so, yeah. I move we have approved the vinyl Haven municipal resolution, um, including the preamble statement.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Alright.
Great, okay, so, um, the next piece, which should get decided relatively soon because it will be the basis of whatever proposal is being written. And it's also something that, um, will, will need to run by the, um, the sea level rise committee. Oh, Andy, do you wanna address, um, the, the community resilience self-evaluation as well? I see it's up on the screen.
It's in the document, so if it needs to be, a lot of, be completed and to be discussed further, so I, I just included what you would.
Yep. Great, yeah, so this will be, this is the piece that, um, I will continue to work to fill out with, um, Andy and like I said, Mark and also sea level rise committee and will include it, um, with the draft, um, proposal for the grant, so you guys can see it all at once in March.
Okay.
Um, the, the last piece is, um, to just, to make the decision on what we're applying for. And I had included a recommendation, um, that we look to use the funds toward the cost of engineering design for our stormwater system. And I, I chose that particular piece because, um, Andy and I spoke about design and so architect, engineering, those are the pieces that are not, uh, funded through our EDA grants. So that is primarily on the town or through, uh, northern borders. So, um, we definitely still need to find funding to assist with that portion of the downtown project. And, um, that would certainly be helpful. So that was my recommendation. It fits, it doesn't fit a hundred percent, but it fits within their, their strategies and it will require a ten percent match, but we can easily demonstrate that. Um, it can be Andy's time, it could be my time. Um, so.
I move that we ask for, um, funding for the downtown project stormwater design.
Second. I'll move in favor.
Um, yeah, and then, and then I guess the other couple of pieces and the next steps for you to consider sort of, you know, staff support for sea level rise committee if they, since we're u- using that committee as, also part of the enrollment eligibility, that there needs to be a staff person or a committee that is sort of the primary, um, let's say the primary contact, but the, the entity that's sort of, ensuring that, that the, the towns moving forward with, um, the, these priority actions. So that's one thing to consider, especially around budget time. And then the other piece is, um, just to think about, I mean, I guess we don't have to think about fall, but just to think about, you know, is there a desire to apply for something like the, the, um, national flood insurance program, community rating system, some other priorities? So, so just to put that on the, on the radar that there's the September grant round and, you know, other things that we had talked about in, in, over the last couple of months around, um, additional priorities could be um, an application for the fall, so. But that's, that's what I have. I don't know if you guys have additional questions or Andy, if you had something you wanted to add that I'm not including that I ought to be.
We have the eighteen hundred dollars in this year's budget.
Um, for what specifically?
Staff support for the sea level rise committee for the rest of the term this year.
Uh, I'm sure we could do that.
Okay.
And then they have a staff person to be able to do that for, but at the moment, but.
And then there's a request for thirty-six hundred net for next fiscal year, so.
Yeah. We did budget, you know.
I thought we did.
The next big thing out of that budget that, you know, we didn't, um, that we've been looking at is the ability to try and hire consultant to work with the planning commission.
Right.
Committee on land use changes that I'm still waiting to hear from that number from.
Okay. So you haven't got a proposal on what the cost would be yet?
Just from one, one group.
Just one.
Haven't shared that group's name or the amount yet, but I was trying to get that second one, so at least you had two to look.
No, I, that's, yeah, I wouldn't, I would like to have two, at least, if you have more, that'd be great, but. Okay. Alright, any other questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. We'll look for the.
Great, yeah, thank you guys.
Look for the next, the next presentation, you said mid-March, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, mid-March. So, yeah, I'll look and see what your, are you guys, are you guys meeting mid-March or are you taking a little break?
The first and then the fifteenth will be the next.
Okay, okay, alright. Alright, sounds good.
Budget time.
Yep. Alright, eight B main community action grant. Is that what we just did? We did that too? Alright, sorry. Alright, good, good. Nine, new business. Seeing none. Ten, report of town manager. Rough week.
Uh, we're back, uh, in town office, open the exception of Tuesday and Friday afternoons. We have had a couple of applications come in for the deputy folks position and with Darlene back, we'll follow up on those now and try and schedule, um, interviews. Continued to work on the audit. Mark has been helping, uh, helping with that. She was also helping the last couple of weeks while Darlene was out in the mornings with Deb. Um, the customer support, um, so she's been chipping away at the audit work, um, for us, which is a great help. And then still, still behind on the budgets. I just recommend that you start scheduling a meeting and we'll just start going through it. With the other things that I'll bring up in the report, it just is taking away from the ability to, to get it done.
Should we schedule something for next week or is that too soon?
I would and we're just, it's gonna kind of.
Alright, well, you know.
I just threw it and it'll be more of a, much more of a working budget process than we've had in the past few years that I've been able to put forward.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm max, pretty well maxed out at the ability to get stuff out, but I have, as I've done it in the past.
No, that's, well, that's understandable. I mean, it's a lot going on and we're a short staff.
Yeah, we, we, we put a lot on your plate and we've had staffing issues. And the more active winter.
Yeah.
Ten years.
Than the last couple of years.
Yeah.
And I can meet any day next week except for Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll be off island starting next Thursday afternoon, so.
I'll just try and do it next Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, this usually.
Cause Monday is technically a holiday again, right?
Today.
Yeah, I have a meeting on Wednesday.
I get that day off, so.
Yeah. Tuesday at five again, is that?
That's a Tuesday at five, yes.
Tuesday five.
Okay.
So we keep doing that enough, it'll get beat into my head that it's five at five.
I just looked at the whole thing on the period as well. I read the whole thing and I don't, I never check the top for the time. I never even, you know, the, when he sends out the and it's like, oh, we have a meeting, like, oh no.
Sent an email and as you've certainly heard by now, we've had a couple of public work, we've had a couple of, uh, truck issues, um, the last couple of weeks. Um, one of which, both of which at this point, I'm waiting to file some insurance claims on both of them. One's a little further along in that process than the other, but I am still waiting to hear from the insurance company as to what our next steps should be for the truck, the F five fifty. Um, it does have a broken frame, uh, so it's just waiting for them to let us know something they're covering, not covering, how much, what our options are. Anyone that's tried to look for any type of vehicle in the last two years knows what, what that looks like and so have been trying to make calls and see what might be out there and available. Still not knowing again what the insurance companies are going to be doing. Um, and then yesterday, the, um, the Western Star, um, was plowing and tired gun had gotten off the pavement a little bit and sucked into the shoulders. It's happened before when the, when the shoulders start to soften up. Um, and so that, that needs some work. Um, but we have to wait for it to warm up just a little bit so we can try and work on it out in the, uh, in the field, if you will. Um, we have to try and, I mean, build back up the air and the air tanks, um, so for the brake system, um, in order to get it safely back to town.
Where is it? The phone called it would make.
Yeah, but as how far could I, I wasn't looking for it and I, I don't know if I didn't pay attention, it was dark, but I, I saw where it happened.
Yeah, but it's just above that. Um, so we'll, we'll get that back to the garage as soon as we can. Um, we've got the parts, trying to track the parts down that we need to try and get it going, just to get it back to the garage and do, do more assessment.
But where exactly is it?
Zeke's Point.
On Zeke's, oh, it's down to.
Well, it's, oh. Tell everyone exactly where it is. It's sitting on Zeke's Point, just as you turn off on, off the Caldwell Neck Road on the pull-off area there.
Oh.
Please, everyone, respect that it's there and do not, do not try to get in or mess with it, thank you.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, I'm assuming that probably people know where it is with, even if we don't say anything.
Oh, yeah, I don't, don't worry.
But, um, I'm assuming it's all locked up and.
It is locked up, yeah.
There's no reason for anybody to try to get into it.
Yeah. Alright, um, so that, yeah, that's been a challenge lately. Um, I did send you some information last week about the supervisor's position. I hadn't heard back. I don't know if you wanna discuss now, kind of what your thoughts on what the next step should be. I don't wanna leave
Think in interview.
People hanging right now.
Interview sometime in the near future. We like to get the position filled.
Right.
And.
It's sound like both are willing to start basically now, so.
Right, right, yeah, right.
One should, yeah. Can we do that interview this week?
Didn't Andy already interview?
Does the board, does the board feel we should interview both candidates as well?
Yeah, so I mean, I just did, I was by myself. I mean, in doing it, you know, we're, you know, I don't have anyone else necessarily to, to step in on that it was supervisor's position and so I don't know if that's one that you'd want to weigh in on and also review, so it's not just me on there. I gave you the questions I asked and the answers that were provided as well as the evaluation of the interview itself from my perspective, um, but it's just me. I just wanna make sure that, you know, the board feels that it's a fair process and that if anyone asks, you can, you can share what, what your reason for the process was not.
I mean, you guys, I think it would probably be wise if we, as a board, spoke with each of the candidates. I would agree with that, that was my thought. I mean, I know where we went, we backed to the position, failed, but.
Now I'd recommend you could do it as like craft a subcommittee, if you will, of the board. If the full board doesn't wanna try and go through it.
And that may make sense.
Official board thing.
So we just have two, two of the board members, then we don't have to have parts and executives.
And they can make a recommendation to the full board if.
Cause if you have more than two, then you'll have to, what is it, are there different legal things?
Right, your forum, once you have a forum, you'll, you'll be an official meeting. But I mean, just for the sake of trying to get everyone together where it's, it'll be this week, but presumably, uh, it's easier to try and schedule with two and then the two make the recommendation along with mine. If it's the same, they're the same. If they're not, then warrant further discussion, I guess, too. Or you could just try and get a meeting where you're all available or majority of you are and.
I think a subcommittee is a pretty good idea, you know, the trend is pretty common, you know, another board for this sort of thing.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's hard when you have only four to five, you know, but, but yeah, two people.
Yeah, I agree.
So when I have to go over the main one tomorrow, we'll be back Thursday.
But maybe.
It's, if, if there are votes on Thursday, I will come back.
Yeah.
But otherwise, I don't know. So I can't do it tomorrow, obviously.
I could do Thursday afternoon or Friday afternoon.
Yep. And I, and I could too, um, either the next.
Actually, I can do Friday afternoon, I could do Thursday.
Long this after four o'clock.
After four on Thursday, alright.
Or tomorrow or Thursday, Friday, yeah. So I guess ask the candidates when they can meet and then we can get two of the five of us at least to interview. Right, I'll be here this week if, but if someone wants to do it, they're, have my blessing, I don't care to sit in on one, they want it.
It doesn't matter to me either. I just do two, figured I could throw it out there.
That's probably, yeah. I, I'm willing to do it, I just can't do it tomorrow and then Thursday's iffy depending on the weather, but I am willing to, to help it. So let us know and we'll get two of you, two of us here to interview. I think that makes the most sense though to have another round of interviews. I have been involved in those processes before and it's usually multiple rounds.
Right.
With multiple different people, so. Might as well have at least two others interview for the position.
Yeah.
The interviewees.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Get some highlights here. Um, mentioned the housing of the second estimate for the, for the work for the planning commission and land use ordinances. You've got the housing committees' report for funding, request for funding. There is a training scheduled for the basic EMTs and, um, there was recently a work force development compact that was created, um, in which we enrolled in, and so I gave you a little quick overview of what that is. You know, it's a way to try and encourage people and, and help them pay for costs associated with, with additional training. And so we signed on as a member of the compact which accesses us in the ability for those, like, so for those going for this training, they'll be able to get up to twelve hundred dollars credited towards them or reimbursed to them for the education costs for this training program. It's twelve hundred dollars in the first year, um, and I think it's like five or six hundred dollars thereafter towards, towards those opportunities, so. That was something just to highlight that, signing on to that. Um, still have a director's position for the ambulance to fill, um. Need the trouble, I need to kind of brainstorm with Pat, checking with her last week, but didn't get to circle back with her, but you need to brainstorm with her on other different ways to come at this. Figure out what we can do. I don't know if an option may or may not be to try and work with North Haven at all for that supervisor-director's position, um, or not. You know, honestly, the, the biggest challenge is the, just being available, you know, committing to be on call where that director's position, we've had it created that the mirror what Mark's available for basically, which is that six, six AM to six PM, five days a week at a minimum. And of course with him on the fire side, he's expected to always be available on the EMA side too. Um, but at the very least that there, it's someone who's here, um, would kind of fill out that six AM to six PM responsibility during the weekdays and then be responsible for making sure the rest of the slots are filled by the other volunteers or potentially themselves. Um, so that's, that's the biggest, the paperwork admin side of it, you know, Pat even said like, you know, that's not as big of a lift and commitment as it is being available, um, that's a, just a hard, hard thing. So hopefully a combination of revisiting that plus the, the new trainees, if, um, for those that are able to get through it. Anyone that we're, we, a couple of years ago had, um, committed to paying for someone's training if they wanted to go through it as long as they signed and then fulfilled those agreements on that agreement, which would be a, a minimum number of on-call time in, in involvement in the department. So with this class of people, maybe that will be, um, at least more bodies available to help relieve some of that pressure. That is something that certainly weighs on, weighing on me to make sure we try and get that filled and, oh, that's goodwill to step in again.
Right.
People have been using the online burn permitting system. I don't know if any of you have yet, um.
Haven't, haven't learned it too much right now.
A lot of people are.
That's, I suppose it is a good time to do it.
You know, so that's good to know that that's being used and makes it like, again, a little burden off of the need to call the fire chief on a weekend or, you know, whatever it might be on a holiday, um, you can have an option to go online and do it.
That seems like a a very good option and.
Is that website on the town site?
I do believe, I don't know if I put, so there's, there's two, the state had had one, but there was a feed of file with the state up until recently. And so there was a third party. Up until recently, and so there was a third-party vendor that did it without a charge, and that was the one we promoted. And like within two weeks of promoting that, the state. Would, you know, remove that fee. Um so there's two options that.
Charge for every damn.
At this point, there's two options. You can go without a fee at this moment. The third party may or may not um in the future charge a fee, but as of right now, the state. Also is not, so I probably could update that to have both of them there, but.
No, I was just, I was thinking it'd be helpful if one of them was on there.
Absolutely. Um the library is under um undergoing a strategic planning process. And they're in that kind of first phase where they're soliciting the feedback through surveys. Um stakeholders and there will be a report on kind of those findings and what the respondents would like to see the library be doing. And it's part of its strategic plan process. So then, once they get that report back and. The trustees presumably in the staff will kind of just determine that next step. How best to take that next step in creating the plan and whether they do it themselves or they continue the support for that, so. Uh that should be wrapping up, I think in the next uh few weeks, since early March perhaps um. That was the original timeline. Um it was a little bit behind just given the the approval to move forward, but. Uh if you haven't seen it, uh Faze uh scheduled and coordinated a workshop um for contractors. The workshop itself is free. There is a lunch if anyone that's coming wants. Lunch, just a minimal minimal fee for the lunch. Um that'll be, I believe, hosted at the church. Um on Thursday, um and it's about shoreline zoning and disturbing soils. Um so. Anyone, any contractor that's doing work in the shoreline zone that would disturb soils is required to be certified. Or someone on the job site needs to be certified in order for that work to occur. Um to make sure origin erosion control measures are in place and whatnot, so. And spent a little bit in the works to talk with her through that, but um that was great that she was just put something together. So there's. Contractors from North Haven, Vinyl Haven and the mainland even. Um so the states, I believe it's the state that's sending out the trainers, so there's no cost to. Have that done.
What's the date if the boats don't go on Thursday?
Great question. Don't know if that entered the equation yet.
Yeah, they're gonna have to think of a a different, you know, an extra date just in case, because it doesn't sound good with Thursday.
And also consider if for some reason the morning boats go and then they get stuck here.
Always good this time of year. Um well, I'm thinking of it, um tomorrow, um there is an appeals hearing, a board of appeals hearing from a. Permit that the planning board had issued or denied, actually, um I think in November. Um so through the appeals board and the applicant, the um it was a mutual agreement to delay it until net full point until now, given the holiday and. Their availability and so that that is happening tomorrow um during the day, I think at ten um. Just so you're aware, um the Army Corps of Engineers as part of an annual. Training opportunity, if you will, that Fay coordinates through the Midcoast Code Enforcement Officer Association. Um she's hosted the group on Vinyl Haven each year, um the exception of maybe one of those years in the last couple, but. Um while they were out this year, one of the uh attendees was from the Army Corps um and kind of. Had kind of asked about permitting floats in structures in the water. Um you know, there's a state process, there's a local process. Um in most of the folks that were in attendance um were a little surprised to hear that the Army Corps had to sign off on those structures too. So it's it's when when the structures are in navigable waters in the ocean body, generally, they consider more generally an available water where not every stream or. Or river is and. So that that was something that she's trying to. Facilitate or kind of be an intermediary for the property owners in the Army Corps to try and help say, here's what's needed. Um you know, for anyone that doesn't have, has a structure in, but doesn't have that permit, it applies for seasonal structures as well as permanent structures. Um so she can help with the kind of the after-the-fact paperwork. She said that there's, the Army Corps is saying that there's no fee or fine. Um for the after-the-fact portion, um but there's be some paperwork and they just want to have on file what what the structure, it's like the state would ask for and we would ask for what. What's there? The challenge is some of these structures don't have permits even from us if they were built prior to.
Right.
Our permitting system, which many certainly have them. Um and so trying to work with and kind of go through that process with them is something that she's gonna try and help facilitate and work with property owners.
So does the town have to fill some of these? We have floats in the harbor.
It may.
So when I got my permit to go my wharf on my land, you had an Army Corps permit for the ramp, the float, the everything, because you had to have it to. Build in the water.
Well, I think that was part of the assumption was that it's going to the state through the NERPA act, you know, process in that I think my certainly, I was assuming that it was. Covered under going through that process.
Well, there is a form in there that a thing that was sent to the Army Corps of Engineers. I don't know what they do with it, but.
That was most people's responses was like, well, you guys already got the information.
Yeah, that's what I assumed, but I mean, that was part of it. I s- I know I remember seeing stuff that was sent to them, so they had to sign off on it, but.
As long as there's no fines or fees involved.
That's what we're told.
Should just, and it's just paperwork. I don't want to paying, but. Let's hopefully people will comply.
There's been a couple in the last couple of months that she's been able to kind of work through and figure out um. So it's something that we'll, and we're willing to try and be the intermediary where so many are gonna need to get it. So it's gonna take a fair amount of her time, but.
Yeah.
That's what it is. I thought that was worth us trying to be in the middle and trying to help.
No, I think I agree. Are the harbor and the sands included in that? Because we have authority over the morons, but not the floats.
Uh anything attached to the land would be regulated through land, like the floats and the peers attached to land would be. Regulated through land use ordinance and triggered triggers the state approval. Um but those would apply to Army Corps, is my understanding. And then as far as the broadband goes, um. I did have one provider say that there's generally plans to bring fiber to the mid-coast. Um but not specifically for Vinyl Haven. Um the other one did follow up and said they'd be happy to talk more. A lot of things have changed and are happening, but haven't had a chance to. And have that follow-up conversation still with them.
Um I heard the conversation is very informal, but Hat Shane told me that his supervisor told them. Fiber to the chemist in Rockton this year and a year later out here.
Forgot I might have my starlight.
At the last thing that they didn't, they said they didn't have any plans for to do anything.
I was surprised by a similar informal conversation that that. Because.
I've been told the same thing, so.
Yeah, if it happens, great, but you know, it's a matter, you know, I think part of it is that game of, well, geez, you know, the towns are willing to. And they did mention in the email about the public-private partnership that they'd be, we don't have plans, but if you're willing to talk about it, as other towns have done. This public-private partnerships. I think part of that's that.
Back and forth.
Well, geez, if you're willing, then.
Right.
You know, there isn't a public partnership you can do. There's models out there for that. I guess more to figure out and follow up.
That it? Andy for you?
I think so.
Alright. Reported members.
I have one thing. In the downtown plan, we said we're gonna figure out what to do with the net factory building. People have been asking if we, when or if we're gonna set up some kind of a committee to. Figure out what to do with it and I think we should maybe think about. Asking if there's anyone interested in being on a committee or trying to do something just.
Sooner rather than later.
Right, just start the next step. I mean, we don't have to do anything tonight. I just put it out there, maybe to put something in the lens that we're gonna set up this committee with five or. I mean, I, would it just be a committee or would it be a? Will we appoint the people, I assume?
Another committee.
Yeah, like about five or seven, whatever we decide, but just see how much interest there is, because we do have to figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah.
I would just soon have someone else look into what the options are than trying to put something else on Andy's plate or our plate.
No, it will be, it's gonna have to be another committee.
Well, it is in the downtown plan that we said we would. Some have the community help us figure it out, so let's.
Yeah.
Start doing some of this.
So do you have anybody that said they would like to start be on a committee or just?
People have already been talking about different things, but I'm sure there'll be some interest if we put it.
Yeah, I agree.
You should have them just send a, send an email or a letter to us and then we could.
Yeah, because I know a lot, I mean, a lot of people ask, and what are you gonna do? I haven't heard anybody say, and I would love to be on that committee.
I think if we put the word out there, the the, I'd be surprised if there weren't enough to make a five or seven-person committee.
I would be surprised if you didn't get five. I mean, people keep saying, are you gonna have a lead one? What are you gonna do with it? I was like, oh, for right now, it's gonna be the swap shop. And then when we figure out what to do, then we gotta figure out what where the money's coming from and what the plan is. I mean, it's gonna be, it's all gonna be a two-month. Committee, it's gonna be a involved, but we do need to start. I have in the committee, so we should just think about that. Maybe that's something we could get down this spring, is at least get the committee.
Yeah, we should be able to get a committee.
And they could, they could talk to the. Put out a survey to see what town wanted to do with it. That's something that they could do, but.
Yeah.
That's a lot on us, so I think that would be, that's my only thing.
I I might just recommend um trying to put um kind of like tidy up a purpose or objectives for the group, you know. You can put out a request, but I can go back and think about the C-level rights committee. We started out just saying who's interested in being on a C-level, A.C. level rights committee. And a few people said, I'd be interested, but what what are the objectives? What does the board want us to be looking at exactly? You know, and if it's as simple as, well, look at reuse and what else it could be, um that's a good start. Timeframe in which you want us, you know, I think just helping put those kind of bookends or.
Narrow it down a little more, not so broad, yeah.
Because otherwise, it could be a really loose.
Well, I, I mean, I think the idea is that we'd wanted, wanted to give us a plan within the next year. What the town would like to see happen with the property, if it's turned into a parking lot, it's that, if it's trying to redo the building for some other purpose, you know.
I would think it'd be, you'd be looking for options to rehab the current structure and something else.
Right.
Or what are the options to tear it down and put in something new? Like the, I think that would be the two.
Yeah.
You've got to, you've got to use that space for something. We have needs. Community center, more formal housing, something, but what is the best use of that space? And is it the current structure or is it something new?
It's probably gonna be two questions. One, can that building be saved? And then two.
We may if not want to think about what's gonna happen with the water district. Property before we jump into seeing what we're gonna do with the nut factory.
Yeah, in my mind, the, I mean, obviously, right now, it is what it is and being used as a swap shop and and our portion of the property in that building. In a reminder that the property is an undivided interest with the um water district is a separate, you know, legal entity. And they own their portion of the building and a certain portion of the lot, and the town owns its portion of the attached building and the portion of the lot. Um and so there's in in the grant in downtown process project, um there were some funds. Kind of identified in there to help potentially relocate the water district. Um and that's something that.
They said they'd be amenable for that, right? Didn't they when?
Then, yeah, we've been having communications with their their board and just trying to figure out what what a proposal might look like to then bring to the board and the community. Um but that'd have to be a bigger, just, you know, approval process. So we're just trying to figure out what that might look like and can we come into an agreement preliminarily between both sides and. Then share that. Um and then that, over the next, over the term of the project, downtown project, thought was the site generally. And maybe the building in some way would be support for the project.
Yeah.
Um and then, so if that's supposed to wrap up at the end of twenty twenty-three. Um so just thinking timeline, right, and then setting the expectations for what might go in when. And so just, just that just helps frame that a little bit. So it'd be like. The first of twenty, you know, twenty twenty-four would be the first year it might not be encumbered is downtown support or. Later or sooner, but.
Well, certainly, we're taking it one step at a time as far as I, what we're doing, working together, the water district and the town on. On what we might wanna do or how it's gonna work. So we're not gonna, we're not just, you know, just have to. Yes, it's not, I'm not saying we're not amenable, because we are, um it's just that we have to take it one step at a time and see what.
Well, I mean, if it was a hard no, there's no sense to do anything, but I I mean, I thought, I mean, I, they just said, if the water district's a hard no on movement, it then that's.
Oh, no, 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 no. We're just gonna have, we've just started to discuss how it's gonna work and. You know, it's a piece of property and it's asset to the to the district and so it's not just a, oh, okay, we'll do this and.
Well, the Jigsaw Point, it does, right? So whether you got it a property encumbered with an undivided interest or a completely different setup down there, I mean. It changes how, and that, and that doesn't, maybe those things in my mind are might be a little bit early still. Um I mean, it wouldn't hurt to, if people are interested, if you want to put it out there, but there's a few other pieces that probably need to fall that would paint a clearer picture as to.
Well, that's my question, would the water district be offended if we had a committee set up to start looking at options? Is that gonna make them go back to, you know what, we don't wanna?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. Because putting a committee together, getting them to start thinking about things.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Even if it is, say, the end of twenty-three, all downtown projects done and they move out and we can start doing something new. Well, we're already halfway through the fiscal year that year, so you're probably not gonna get funding until maybe the twenty-four fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. So then you don't start until the next year on whatever it is we've decided to do with it.
I think that's, I think that's an optimistic timeline.
Exactly.
Get it formed this year, then they could figure out what they wanna do.
That's what I mean.
Right.
Get, get an idea and get.
Right.
Because the grants, I don't know what grant funded usually comes available, but it seems like it's always at the beginning of the year or.
It always depends, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it might be good.
Plus it depends on what it might be useful.
It's not gonna be a cheap project and it's gonna have to be some grant funding or something.
And there's gonna be town votes on it and all that stuff, so it's.
So. But I mean, just putting it out there to get a committee together.
Yeah. Um I just had a question on, if you've heard back from the fire marshal, if they're coming out anytime soon. Um for, for that, the use of the building.
Your fire hall.
Yes.
They they have, you can.
We can.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. You know, when we can start using that?
Uh just a matter of working out a schedule and seeing who's interested and.
Okay.
I've had one person interested in kind of intermittent use. Uh of course, the vet is currently under a lease agreement, so their schedule. Once every three weeks on a Thursday is um it's kind of set in stone at the moment. Um I've had one other request to kind of use it intermittently for, you know, a couple of days a week, I think it was, two or three days a week. Um for a class, um and then I've had someone else ask and inquire if they could. Have an agreement closer to what we had before with um the engine house press. Um I haven't had any other beyond those two. In the last few months, so.
One of those requests from my boss?
Yeah.
And with the other requests from the, okay, and that person indicated perhaps that they would not mind sharing. The space, so.
Alright, well, that's good that they came up.
Only thing I have, I noticed the flea market field took some, took a pretty bad hit, it looks like, this weekend. I don't know if there's much we're gonna be able to do about. Actually saying who did it. I mean, it's probably some pretty good guesses. I think there was something at the church this weekend.
Yes.
Uh Saturday, so these people, you know, big pickup truck, but the field is pretty rough, I don't know if you've noticed it.
Charlie Joe Fiyett's three times today.
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, but the the that now there's gonna be some very frozen tire ruts through it. But you know, the, because the ground was so soft.
Yeah.
Sure, it was one of, you know, one of those things, you know, probably, once you're on it, you you're on it, you don't, now you realize, oh, too late, but.
It was an intentional.
I don't think it was intentional, but you know, just people.
They meant to park there, they just didn't realize how soft it was. No, no, it wasn't like someone was doing donuts on there.
Yeah, no, nobody was, it wasn't malicious, but.
So what's?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we've maybe some informal phone calls, though, to people. I don't, I don't know, I really don't have.
To the property owner or?
Well, to prob, I don't, I know we own part of it and.
Yeah, we own the part near the stop sign, like the intersection of School Street and Water Atlantic Ave.
I mean, I don't know, I just.
The town owns a corner?
Oh, I didn't watch, I, I only think it happened on that corner.
Yeah, this the.
I still feel like.
School Street and Atlantic Ave corner is my understanding and then.
I don't even think.
Going down School Street and backwards Main Street and the church, that's other three quarters roughly, there's some by west.
Right.
Yeah.
I I still feel like the flea market needs to move to a different location.
Well, what is, this has nothing to do with ruts and the, I don't know what Eric's.
I don't know, I just, if.
Just like not park, not try to. Just like not, not try to use it as.
I don't, I don't even know, I don't really have any point, I guess, right? I would like to find out who it was, you know, if we could somehow casually find out.
I'll just, I guess I just wanna throw up there like this is not, uh, town property.
Yeah, as long, yeah, that's fine, yeah, as long as it's sectioned, that it's not our, whatever.
If it's not on town property, it's.
Whatever, you know, we have nothing to say about it.
Yeah.
It did, I don't think it, it looked like it was close to the main church parking lot.
Yeah.
I get that it's a com- very much a community using, very thankful, I'm sure that the community, thank you to Wes for allowing it to be used that way.
Exactly.
Yes. Um, which is, it's unfortunate that it's happened, you know, if, if perhaps Wes had anything to share, you know, in a future meeting, maybe he could. Do so or would do so, but, um, at this moment, I don't know that I'd recommend.
Yeah. But you're right though.
It's just, it's not that I don't, I want flea market to continue, I just don't think the space is big enough anymore and it's becoming not safe in the summertime. For all the people that congregate there, I feel like a better location could be found, but I'm not gonna push that, so. Yeah. That's all I have. Anyone else? I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
How long, just, this is in the, how long you think?